Okay. We want to welcome everyone to the November 22 budget meeting of the Twilla County Council. Kendall Thomas is present, Tom Tripp, Ty Hoffman, Jared Hamner will be joining us, and I'm Scott Wardle. We have various members of the management team and elected officials offices with us, and we'll begin with the budget discussion.
And Tim Gillie from the Twill Trench Group.
Tim, good to see you.
Yeah, you're up.
All right. Who are we turning the time over for this to?
Andy's going to start tonight.
Okay.
The tab, are we on council? Where we were at?
All right. We are getting very close now. One of the things that's still outstanding, and so we like to, one, show appreciation to all the departments. We've had a lot of meetings here recently and worked through some things, some things we've added, some things we've taken out. And so I think we're down just to a few more decision points. The biggest one which we're still working on right now is we ended open enrollment on Friday, and the information was sent to us yesterday. And so we're still working on getting the benefits put into the budgets. And so that's one thing that you're going to see changing a little bit as we enter the budget, enter the benefits in.
We do anticipate that it's going to go down from, so it'll only get better.
Yeah. One of the things that we saw before we had, we were paying a greater percentage of single coverage. We actually saw the number of employees covered by our insurance go down by 29 people, which was about 15% or so. But the overall cost should stay exactly the same as we anticipated last year, even though we had a seven and a half percent increase in the insurance premium. So it's kind of a wash this year, just so you're aware. That'll get spread out throughout all the budgets. And so the two things we had to adjust for is people changing their coverage, which there were maybe 30 or so that changed coverage. But then we also have the 80/20 split, which filters through almost every single budget. So Allison's working on getting the updated benefits figures for all the departments. And so you'll see them changing just a little bit as we finish that part. Couple of the issues that, issues, some of the discussion that we still have, we still have some things that we're finishing out this year. And so some of the projects, we're going to have to push it in next year. We've already identified a number of those and are putting those in. There's still a few that we're keeping track of. I know the sheriff has his Bear Cat or Kick Cat or whatever it is.
It should be here on time.
It should be here on time? Okay. That's one that we were coming down to the wire. But some of those, if we know they're getting pushed, we want to make sure we have the funding for, in the next year's budget. Rochelle was helping as well. We have some grants that need to get pushed, that we won't spend them out this year. It's just the way that the state grant cycle falls. And so some of those, we're making sure are pushed across. So as we go down, there are just a number of, a few departments, I have a list of all the departments. Some of them I show as being completed. We really, I think we have everything ready to go. Others, we just have one or two open items. The first, we'll start with the councils. If you want to, there's one change that we made was to the employee benefits.
So council, something I recognize that, that we have done with the council here, and not to profile any elected group, that there was no benefits given to the council or elected officials when that was brought up. We wanted to put that in there as an option. There are a few that you may not choose to accept those, but certainly to attract people to run, you want to offer benefits. And so they added that in there. And I think they only added it for two.
Correct.
That may have a possibility. So we did look around throughout the county, the cities, the municipalities, the school boards, and throughout UAC, and those offerings are in line that they usually do. We were the only ones that did not, so.
And so we included in above the $37,000, as you see in the employee benefits, we added in $46,000. That's $23,000 per council member if they decide to take family coverage.
When you talk about benefits.
That's medical benefits, right?
Correct. Just insurance.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes, medical benefits.
Okay.
Well, it would be all the benefits offered to the other employees, so dental, vision, all that kind of stuff.
I see now. Wow. It's late in the budget cycle. I watched a video on dad jokes today. Two dads going back and forth. I'm just going to let you know, they may pop out a lot. Okay. We're good. All right. So under the county managers, one thing that we were asked to add in here recently, we had a presentation on contracting out to have a grant writer. This is up to you. We stuck some money in there in the county manager's budget to, for a third party to come and do grant writing for us. Is that something that you would like us to include, I mean collectively?
In that budget versus the general administration?
That's the other part I thought of. Either place is fine.
Because there's already some in the general.
There's some there. Okay. We could put, we have one that's called GA or general administration. We have professionals. That way we don't have to create another line item. Thank you.
So council.
We could put that money there.
Sorry, Andy. So council, we had talked about that. We did have a presentation on the benefits of a city, or in particular this county, either putting out an RFP, looking at a third party to look at other grants. I know Rochelle's office has been wonderful in looking at those. I know that they're tight. This would be a third party that's looking outside of her particular office in different avenues that the county has. So we put some money in there. Is, is that acceptable with everyone? I think we've talked about that, and there is, or does anybody have a comment?
I'm sorry, Jared, I missed what the line item was worth.
It's $80,000.
It's one that's, got the rectangle around it, the blue rectangle?
Oh, the blue rectangle.
We cut it from 1.1.
The managers.
Somebody needs vision insurance here. No, I'm just kidding.
No, I just got my spreadsheet sized wrong, I think.
Maybe my jokes aren't as funny as yours.
So is that the right place to put it? Allison put it in a different place, it sounds like? With, is it still under the county managers or somewhere else?
It's under general, general administration. We currently have $60,000 for consulting services in the general administration that would cover any kind of professional and technical type work.
Should we leave it there?
Well, let me ask a question. Say then a line item again.
So it's consulting services that would cover any type of general consulting that we need in the past.
Is that for lobbyists too?
No. Yeah, that's a separate line item.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just want to make sure we're not mirroring those.
We could definitely add additional funding to that. In 2022, we had $125,000 budgeted. We cut that budget this year to 60,000. Last year, we spent 37,000 out of that line.
I think it was, I think historically we just had an accumulation. We had 60,000 we were going to do as, as, just available to have a lobbyist go for us. We had.
The lobbyist is separate. The lobbyist is in the state government relations. In there, we have, for that, we have 45,000.
Separate line item.
I guess I can't answer that one clearly.
Okay.
Probably for outside legal counsel.
Some of these would be like for any kind of like, you know, if you wanted reports done, if you wanted studies done. Some of these are just basically placeholders for things that come up.
Yeah.
Okay. And how much is in there? I'm sorry?
There's currently $60,000.
Should we up that to 80?
I'm glad you're being patient with me.
Yeah, you're fine.
All I know is the 60 is the very lowest end. So I would probably recommend to the council, if you're agreeable, to raise that. And if we raise it to 80, then you'd probably utilize every bit of that on the grant writer.
Correct.
And if you want to have other things like reports that Allison was talking about, I would suggest you probably raise that more so.
We can also do a budget adjustment later on.
We averaged about 40. If you want to add the 80 to the 40 or 80 to 30 and get to 110, that should cover what we're asking for in the grant writer, plus some additional studies that you may have.
I like that. And also what Councilman Thomas brought up is, you know, where if something comes up, Allison, this may sound porcupine to you, but we could do a budget adjustment if something came in higher than what we had anticipated or lower.
So council, I'm hearing 110,000 for that consulting services line, and is that right? Is that what I'm hearing?
You're right to business. I love it. 110?
So let me just make sure, Andy, what you said is correct, that Allison and Andy, we've spent, by the way, that should be the name of a TV show. It's Allison and Andy. Or Allison and Andy. Sing, is it?
No, we don't sing.
We, we, yeah. But you're saying that on average, we're spending $40,000 out of that.
Out of that consulting line, yes.
Okay, so 120 would be.
We could get a 120 would be kind of on par with that.
So 120?
Yep.
So we're going from 40 to 120?
No, we're going from 60.
We budgeted 60 this next, we planned on 60, but we spent 40, right.
So to follow the train of thought.
I understand. I'm just wondering, what did we spend that difference on this year? What was that spent on?
Between the.
The 37,000.
I'm guessing it went to pay for reports, accounting services, attorney services, things like that.
So 80 plus 120?
Eighty.
What, plus 40? 120?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, over in the notes section, it says hire a third-party grant writer. I think that is the right way to go.
Sure.
You could hire a full-time one for 80, but you won't get what you could, you won't get, you know, you need some targeted stuff. So I think you use it for grant writing on a contract.
Okay.
I agree.
I'll back it out then. Mine and Allison will include it in the other one.
And you just delete that professional services line as well?
Yes. Yeah, I'll delete that. All right. The other things that we, we've discussed, there are some positions that we've removed as we go down the list. And so the budget analysts, we talked about that being deferred. One thing in the facilities, let me go to that one. That's when we have some projects that are carrying over.
Which tab is that?
So this is the 4160, the public buildings.
Are you off the council then?
Yes.
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Is, were you going to talk about a vehicle on the council?
Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
So council, we have evidently, under the manager and council, you have four vehicles currently. One is the, I don't know what year it is, 1950 LTD. No, I'm just kidding.
The Crown Vic.
The Crown Vic. Rochelle's old SUVs.
And then an older.
SUV.
SUV.
That's the Exploder.
Yeah. That they use for dirt trails and things like that. And then you have a car that the managers, two Impalas, and the managers and the council use. So what we found is the two other vehicles, you'd never use those for long-distance travel or outside of Twilla County, really.
Is that defined long-distance in those two vehicles as outside Twilla City limits?
Outside of Twilla County.
But you can go to the mountains.
Twilla City, you wouldn't go to Windover River or anything.
I'd go anywhere in either one of those vehicles. I'd go to Chicago.
Yes, but you wouldn't come back.
Yeah, the Exploder, the Crown Vic, we probably need a surplus, but I'd like to see us use the county demolition car. People want to buy that.
Anyway, the point I'm bringing this up is there's been a shortage of people being able to go up to the Capitol and things like that. And so I'm just throwing out the idea, just so that we, we have everything on the table. Is there interest in having a leased vehicle?
I think there's a need for another vehicle, personally for the department.
And surplus the others, or the ones there? I think that one SUV you use, we, we can use for dirt trails. You wouldn't want to use a nicer car to go on dirt trails as we were. I know that when we were doing, what's the long trail from St. George to Logan? What was it called?
High Desert Trail.
High Desert Trail. Councilman Thomas used those cars to be able to go on those trails. You wouldn't want to use a newer car. But to be able to make it to St. George for conferences or Logan or other places, you need a.
Let me tell you about the old Exploder. That car goes, it's nice. It's nice inside. I keep it clean, and you can go anywhere in that car. Now Sean, now one of our previous commissioners would never ride in the Crown Vic with me. Never, ever. He probably wouldn't have ridden with me in the Exploder. But to drive that car anywhere, take it to the Capitol. It is a dang good riding vehicle. So to say that it's only good for dirt roads?
Counsel.
That's why they have a four-wheel drive.
So we have a list that we compiled for the departments of average, or state contract prices. So for a Ford Explorer, cost is roughly 34,000, 34.8. I would anticipate that we need to add at least 10% to that. A Chevy Equinox is 22.6. Same, we probably need to add a minimum of 10 to 20% to that cost. So depending on what you'd like to add to your budget.
Well, we've got some people coming next week to present about the Unified Flea Services that do leasing. We were thinking more about leasing potentially.
Or not.
Why?
Because it's extremely hard accounting-wise, and it's takes, well.
I think that's why you went away from it in the first place, right?
Exactly.
Because it's like 500 bucks a month with your $600 a year, and you don't have to do, deal with any maintenance. Why is that bad?
Well, let's not debate the virtue of that. Let's wait till the presentation. But the question is, do we want to put this in, and we can pull it back out if we decide to go a different way?
And to finalize the budget, I think that's what the, what we're trying to get to. And so I only bring that up right now because we certainly don't want to bring it up on the 29th, right? We want to have this ready.
Yeah, it, yeah, those are just, those are the.
So give me that final number again, if you're adding 20% to it.
So I would say you'd probably need probably roughly 30, 37, 38 for a Ford Explorer, or approximately 28 for a Chevy Equinox.
So 28, or what'd you say, 34?
She said 28. Yeah, the 34 was on the.
Ford Explorer.
Ford Explorer, 28 for a car.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to comment on this topic.
Oh. Chair recognizes Councilman Tripp.
You know, I think it's nice to have another vehicle, but in my experience here the last four years, there are lots of vehicles around here that if you have a reputation of treating them nicely, you can borrow them. I don't know if we need to add a car. We've got lots of licensed cars. If you plan out a little bit in advance, you can usually find someone who will cooperate with you and loan you an appropriate car for what you're intending to, just as an alternate to buying one. I, I agree. I don't see, all these cars have low mileage. I mean, even my old Ford Explorer that I drive, and I say my car, hell, it's only got 160,000 miles and it's 22 years old. So there are plenty of cars. I agree with Councilman Tripp, but he says, hey, you would do it. Pickup, Jerry's been really good to allow, and IT's been when I needed a car before. Just.
I borrowed one from Rose's for a pickup truck when we needed one.
Yeah, it's been.
Would you guys rather do that? I'm, I'm fine with that. It's going to save us some money.
Sure. We can do that. We always do a transfer budget if we, or if we find that not. I, I appreciate what Tom says. I've not found that, not here in the county, in other places. So if everybody in the county is willing to work with everybody, I'm, I'm good.
But you can also turn in mileage. If you take your own personal vehicle, you know.
But Allison prefers not to do that for gas purposes. I think he once said that he prefers to.
If, yeah, if we, if we, it is cheaper to use the, we do, we don't not let you turn in your mileage either.
I just, I understand that.
I want to put it on record, I'd like to borrow the sheriff's car with the lights and sirens, and if that's okay.
He's giving you almost a thumbs up there. Now, we had a better alternative where I came from. We used a prisoner transport truck one time to take the council to a state meeting. That was awesome, as they all got out of it.
Some say it would be fitting.
That was the last time they did that.
So council is, wanted to defer this and see how we, how we go throughout the year?
Sure. I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Sounds good. So moving on to, in public buildings, there are two things that we're having to push to next year. And so the detention center, we had, I think, $150,000 in there. We're replacing the swamp coolers, which probably never should have been installed in a building like that with air conditioners. And so we plan on trying to do that this year. It's about $400,000. We couldn't get it finished by the end of the year. Then we have $75,000 in Johnson Controls for their, their system as well, their HVAC system that is going to be pushed to next year. So we added some to that, 475 to the 150-ish, I think is what it was. I have the comments out to the side.
Let me back you up to detention center.
Sure.
We're talking the old jail?
No.
The new jail.
The new jail. Yeah, we're not, I'm spending $400,000 for air conditioning.
Okay, just wanted to say because.
Thank you for the clarification. So it's 400,000 for the HVAC, 86,000 for the Johnson Controls. So those are a couple of things that we just found out we wouldn't be complete this year, so we pushed it into next year.
Andy, and.
Please.
Is Paul still here?
Yeah, he's in the van.
Is that going to be enough to cover that with extending it into next year with inflation?
Well, I wish I could tell you, you know, Director Sparks would probably be better. He's been the one doing that, but I can definitely say that it is a needed.
Absolutely.
Upgrade, and we're appreciative of Jason and his crew's efforts piemilling the swamp coolers, but it's, it's past due and it's time. And like the manager mentioned, it should have never been done with swamp coolers.
My, my only concern is, are we budgeting enough with inflation?
I think Jason provided these numbers, if I'm not mistaken. And I think he, he's got some estimates.
Okay. That's cool.
Okay. Any questions on that one? Another position that we've discussed, we deferred, was the GIS technician. So that one's been taken out. And then in some of the other budgets, specifically some of the special revenues and some of the other enterprise funds, we'll be making some final adjustments based on the expenditures. We use fund balance, and so that, that number of how much fund balance we use depends on how much we spend. And so those are just some small adjustments you'll see, just to make those funds zero out. And so we'll be doing that kind of last, I guess that's really the last-minute thing we do, is once we've got everything tied down, then we, then we know exactly how much we have to transfer from the fund balance to cover any excessive expenditures over revenue. So just understand, there's quite a few of those that way. The, the one that is upcoming, we'll be having a presentation from our consultant on Desert Peak. They'll be coming to do a presentation on the 6th. And so I have to make sure my spreadsheet didn't line up. I think this is the impact fees. Allison, you'll have to help me with this one, so. So as you know, we paid off the debt at Desert Peak.
15.
Okay, yes, thank you. Yeah.
How long was that debt in current?
We, we had a couple of years left on that debt. Is that correct? And so we decided last year just to go ahead and pay it off. And so you'll see in line, on line item 19, we budgeted some, but we, I think we just missed that we paid it off. And so we zeroed that out. And the question is, is then can we use the, and this is, the question then is, we know we have incorporations coming, and so the impact fees are going to, and maybe you've adjusted all of that. Allison, this is kind of hard to adjust the revenues for impact fees for, because this is kind of a moving target right now. So we currently had budgeted, I think, $348,000 in revenues for parks. And we paid off the debt. And so what I did, Allison, to make sure I'm doing this right, I added in the interest that we're also getting, 348,000 plus 3,000 is 351,000, that we could put towards Desert Peak once we get the study. Is that?
You mean as a bond payment? Or just, or just flat out, as money ongoing expense cost, on end?
Because this, because this is.
You're not paying that interest anymore on the bond.
Yeah, because this is going to kind of be difficult, as we're not exactly sure what's going to happen with the incorporations. It would be difficult right now to know how much we could bond for using this funding because that's going to, we're going to have to find where that levels out. So it could be used for that, but it's really inflex until we.
Yeah, I, I'm just, yeah, my, my concern is, you know, going back to the old, how my parents taught me to budget, you pay off one debt, then you put that money towards another debt, or you, you save that money and keep that in your budget so that you're, you're not, you're moving that money in to pay for something else.
So essentially, if we did that, it would just roll, it would just sit in the fund balance.
Okay. That's cool.
So to, to this point, we need a couple of things, and I'm not sure where we're on the impact fee study. These lines can only go for what's outlined in the impact fee study. And so that, we couldn't just put it for arbitrary capital desert peak. It would have to be outlined in whatever, these would have to pay for what's outlined in those impact fee studies.
You have a question, Councilman Tripp?
I was going to just say what Allison said. When you have impact fees, you've got to have a capital facility plan that feeds off of.
Yep.
So you can't just say, we'll pick that up and go somewhere with it.
And so what.
You can do what you're saying, but you need to update your impact.
So what, I believe what's here is, I'll have to, this is a, this is a specific project, what's, what's here. I believe it's the, it may be.
What are you looking at?
This 150,000, I believe it's the fence.
Right here.
Yes, that's specifically outlined in the.
In the impact fee.
In the, yeah, in the impact fee schedule or the plan right now.
So if we can, it may be best to have Rochelle kind of explain where we are in the process of our impact fee, so you understand we've got part of it, but I'll let her explain where we're at, and how it all ties together.
We started the capital facilities plan project at the end of 2021, and added the impact fee analysis and impact fee plan. This year, we have done the desert at peak plan, and we've also done the fire study, which have impacted our impact fee plan along with the incorporations. So we currently have the draft master transportation impact fee study. However, the council needs to decide if we still intend to construct the network roads that are in the newly incorporated areas or not before we can finalize that leg of it. They are just working on the fire study information that they received to wrap up the public safety side of it. And then we're waiting on you guys to identify what you want to implement out of the desert peak plan in order to wrap up the recreation plan side of it. So.
Let me ask you a question. You talked about.
A lot of different pieces.
You mentioned about the roads in the, the new cities. Is that what I call the new cities? So these are roads that were, that have been planned or roads that need to be planned?
Have been planned, and we have been collecting impact fees on them up to this point. But now that they are in an incorporated area, do we continue to leave them on the plan, or do we remove them? Or do we remove them?
What would be an example of one of those roads?
Well, yeah, if you remove them, do you give what we've collected to them and say, there you go, or what?
We've spent a good portion of that on the projects that we have completed. Thirty-third Parkway is one, and that is one we met with Erda, and they determined that we would keep that one on because we have a grant for that one.
Does Tom's lane one consider them as?
Tom's lane is one, and we've met with her on that. Pole Canyon, the connection of Pole Canyon to Drew Bay, that would be in Lake Point. Do we keep that one on? Uh, the connection of Village Boulevard to Mid Valley Highway, portion of that is in Erda. Do we keep that on? Oak Expressway, that's not one that we've collected impact fees on yet, but has been identified by this body as an important road. It will be in Erda and Lake Point. Do we keep that on the plan?
Can we continue to collect impact fees for a road that's not in our areas, my question?
If we intend to construct the road, my understanding is we can.
Councilman Tripp.
But the, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I believe there's a six-year limit on impact fees that are collected. You can't hold them for fifty years to build the Oker Valley or Oker Expressway. So I don't think we want to put that in our impact fee plan because it's too far out in the future. I don't think you can do that.
We can still put it on there as an identified road. The question with, um, the impact fees being collected for these roads is the impact fees are only collected for the building permits in the unincorporated area.
Which is shrinking.
Yes.
Which I go back to, I think that this is a broader discussion than we're prepared to have tonight.
Yes.
Definitely, but just so you're aware.
I think we just leave it at three fifty-one and
No, it it won't be able to go to three fifty-one is what I'm saying because we don't have three hundred and fifty-one dollars or three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars worth of projects defined that are eligible. The hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have right now are the new trail heads replacement and then to replace the slide and toys at desert, at the pool. That line probably needs to just be, uh, capital improvements, not desert at peak capital improvements.
And you know, and Andy
Parks and Rec capital improvements.
I I think one thing that I may have misunderstood over the last three months, and I'm going to say this. We had to talk about it down at UAC, and that is paving some of our trails that come out of desert at peak where the trail heads are to be used instead of dirt trails. Uh, there there's the railroad one that that may or may not be used. There's the one that runs up to Utah Avenue that has a tunnel already built into it. Some of those things we may want to look at. In my opinion, I think the more of that we can do, the better it off our community becomes. It's an amenity that communities want. The state is actively pushing this as a transportation plan and a connectivity plan, so.
And there's a lot of grant money out there for those kinds of projects right now.
But we'll have to have matching grants.
Well, and you know, that's doesn't, you could use the impact fee money for the projects that you've defined as grant or matched to those grants.
So I I think changing it from D B C capital improvements to capital
Yeah, parks and rec capital.
Parks and Rec would be great.
Yeah, that would be, okay.
Yeah.
That's my recommendation. Because we will have the study next year for projects.
Yeah, because we don't have the, yeah, we don't have the
Can I just ask one question? Rochelle, when is that impact study gonna be done? Do you have an estimated time?
It was intended to be done in December, but we have so many moving targets now. I would say April.
So we probably ought to make a decision pretty soon and talk with the other entities to make a decision. Is there any roads that were contractually committed to?
There are a few that were contractually committed to in development agreements, and I will get all that information gathered for you. The sooner the better on the transportation one because that one is about ready to be wrapped up.
Okay.
Okay.
Would that come too soon to be on our December first meeting, meeting in December?
December sixth.
No, we could have it ready for then.
Okay.
December sixth.
Yeah. December sixth.
Thank you. So I don't know how to answer that other than we'll have to
My recommendation is that it stays at one fifty because we don't have any new projects identified. And so we can't budget for projects that we don't have identified, so.
So roll it into our fund balance and tell
Yes.
Is it the general fund balance?
Yeah.
Is it, is it a, this is a separate fund, though, impact fee. So there's a separate line that you can keep track of.
Yes.
Recreation.
Yep, all, they're all sep, they're all
Just roll it back into the fund balance.
Yes.
Counsel, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
We'll put, leave it at one fifty until we have the plan in place, and we can come back and amend it.
Okay.
Just so you understand, these plans are all coming together at one time, so we'll have to have some broader discussions about some of these things, so. Um, I think I skipped over one on roads. Um, after discussion about one of the roads that we need to make some, to make some additional improvements to, we've we've set aside some money for that. So the the pavement preservation line item, we've taken that up to accommodate some discussion that we have on fixing one of the roads. Um, contractor will pay half, more than half, we'll pay the other half to get this up to where it needs to be. So we've added in that funding on pavement preservation. That's why you see that the the number highlighted in yellow. It has a note to the side.
Okay, any questions? We're good?
That seems like a big number. Our our reserves in that fund is not that high right now. We're kind of pulling that down fast. Is that an okay number?
That one's still pretty high. They are, they are, they are using, doing quite a few projects this year, equipment they're replacing. But we've looked out five years, and they were still good after five years based on the revenues coming in, so we'll make any adjustments necessary.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. The next one I had was on human services.
Twenty-one?
Yeah, it's on revenues. This one, Allison may have to help me on this one. So this is the opioid lawsuit settlement, and I know we'll have another agreement, uh, something coming before you, because we're getting multiple agreements on settling the opioid. And so just, I wasn't sure on the number that we have there. I I I talked to Gary, Gary, sir. And we were trying to figure out, I know we had two payments we thought we were gonna receive this year. I don't know, Allison, have we received any of them?
We've received one of them.
Okay.
So
So we just need to just, and I had a note out to the side from the, at least it's the last email that I had from Kathleen Rhodes. She had the amounts each year. I'm not sure if that's the the same figures that you're using. That's just the last email I had on the opioid, and that's from UAC.
Gary, is that, which amount do we go with, the three hundred?
Yeah, it's correct. The the two that we were receiving twenty twenty-two are adding up to three hundred and forty thousand. Then there's one in twenty twenty-three that will get around July. That added to it gives us the five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
And we've put that money, the money from this year in as a prepaid revenue, so we're planning to roll that into next year. And so we probably need, we do need to increase it to the five hundred.
Okay.
Question on that one. You know, there's a lot of people here think they want a part of that. Have we allocated anything to law enforcement or health department or any of those others? They all think they're getting part of this, from what I heard.
The answer is yes. They, those are holdbacks. We've worked with Paul and with
Gary, will you come up to the mic so it's recorded?
You can't hear me?
The recorder may not.
We've worked with Paul and with Scott Broadhead. The three of us are a committee to review these after another committee reviews them, and there is a holdback. So we've held out money for the DA and held out money for the sheriff and the prevention unit that's in the health department. And the rest we put out for the, basically the behavioral health and substance use system that they've done grants. And I'll be presenting those decisions to you on December the sixth. It won't add up to the five hundred and twenty-nine thousand right now. They'll add up to the original three hundred and forty thousand amount. Then we'll have to see if we're gonna put out more grants or hold back more money.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Please round for me. We have this ongoing debate. We don't do dollars. We have to round up, so my bad. Okay, so that was on the opioid. One other thing, so in June, I believe this last year, this this year, we, um, signed a, an agreement on Medicaid match. Gary may have to explain all of this to me. Uh, we we talked through this, and so it was twelve and a half million dollars, is that right? Twelve and a half million dollars over five years. And so originally, we budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, which is twelve and a half divided by five years. The trend is a little bit lower than that, and so what I I did in discussing with Gary is this this year, we anticipate spending about one point six million dollars. Initially, we just did two and a half or, um, two point two million dollar, two point two, yeah, two point five million dollars. And so I adjusted that down based on the trend for now. It's probably gonna go up through the years, and we may be over three million dollars five years from now. But just looking at this current year, we just budgeted that down based on what we think the expenditures will be. And Gary, if I'm wrong on that, if that was, did we, we think we're good on that? Because the, here here's what happens. If we budgeted two and a half, two and a half million dollars, that would be our cases going up sixty percent in one year, which I don't think is gonna happen. So we're just trying to budget up.
So I did meet with Andy, and I'm okay with reducing the two and a half million, which was an average of those five years, down to one point nine five. But I would also say there may be times I have to come back and ask for a budget adjustment. We have just had the situation where we got our last billing, uh, for the quarter three, and it's fifty thousand dollars above the amount I had budgeted. So with Carrie and and Allison's help, we're gonna do a budget adjustment with you, and it'll cover us through the rest of this year. But I'm just afraid that could happen next year. We may come back and say one point nine was not enough. We need to go up towards a two point five, but I'm okay at one point nine five.
We'll keep watching that.
Councilman Wardle.
Does that allow for growth next year or to hold the average? What percentage of growth does that allow for?
We we currently anticipate ending up at one point six million dollars, and so we put one point nine.
Okay.
The the revenue contract was based upon those projections for growth, so State Health Department said to us, this is what you'll need.
It was one point two million dollars in twenty twenty-one and one point six, and so we're just trying to budget up what we think would cover us, so. And the other one, which is the bigger one, we need to have a little bit of discussion on is the capital projects. So there's a couple of things that we've added in. That's the forty fund. And so this one here, we we added some to the the Stansbury Parkway signal. That's not gonna be finished this year. So Rochelle recommended we we move six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars into next year. This is up to you now. We could, we could put money in here as a placeholder for desert at peak, or we could wait until we get the study and then make a budget adjustment if we decide to do some projects based on the study. That's up to you. I mean, it's it's either way. We can wait until we get the study and then come back and bring it to you, then we can make a budget adjustment at that point, which is, would be fine.
What would be the placeholder amount? Take a guess. I I kind of like the idea of if we could come up to a placeholder, take it, take our best shot at it and say, but I'm, either way, I'm okay.
It it may be helpful as as we, as we have them come and present. They'll present kind of the concept, and you can say, we would like to do these five or seven or ten things, and then we can price that out, then we can bring it back, and then we can make the adjustment based on what, one, what we think we can accomplish next year, and two, what we have the funding for.
Accomplish.
So waiting is fine.
Say we're better off to wait then?
Waiting is fine. If you wanna wanna get together and have the, have them present the study, then we can
I'm okay to have a placeholder. That doesn't
Either way, it doesn't.
And 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 then you can look at that and either take away or add to a placeholder.
Yeah.
I I like that because it 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 stays in front of you that you're looking at, and you're continuing massaging it to either meet the criteria that is needed for that year, not. But if you take it off, then that old out of sight, out of mind happens.
Have we had any thoughts? I mean, I know, how much do you want to do as the price tag? But Ty, have you heard any, have you, I haven't been in the discussions on that. Any recommendations?
I think they're gonna do a presentation on it, um, on the desert peak, but I, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you? I just, I just thought it was
I was going to answer his question.
Oh.
I, you know, we we've talked about using ARPA money on this, but we don't call it ARPA money, but we do.
It's here. Yeah, ARPA's in this fund, so.
And and we just received three point four that we weren't planning on.
Three point two, right?
Three, I would recommend we put a placeholder of five million. That's an investment, and I think that our investment's going to have to be greater, I, than five million. I already know that. I don't know what that number's going to come in at, but I think that if we're going, if we're going to follow the principle of what we established last year as a council, and that it's, as a business enterprise, we either start to run this in a way which means the O and M, and we bring it up to serviceable and put money in to fix what needs to be fixed. Or the second question was, we sell it, and we're not going to sell it. So we've got to make a capital invis, investment in the business enterprise. And we cannot attract events. We cannot continue to promote. If we're gonna hire a tourism manager, we have to have a facility that works. So I I would suggest we put five in to start, and then we look at what the phasing and what other things are after the first when we get um, the plan back.
And, uh, may I speak? You know, I I think our plan is a wonderful plan, but I think it's out of our budget range. I would like to have an advent, uh, amendment that said, if you've got twenty million dollars in the next ten years, what do you do?
Well, and and I think we can discuss that once they present. But I think this is a a stopgap because we've got problems down there. We've got sprinkling problems. We've got problems with fields. We've got problems with stalls. We've got, that that just have to be brought up to satisfy.
Well, I I agree completely, but I I think the plan, you know, a previous commission not that long ago came up with a two hundred million dollar plan.
I would agree with that.
And and we're not gonna do that. We will, we'll never afford that, even if we're making it on a business basis. You can't overcapitalize and expect to have a return on your investment. So you've gotta be wise in your choice, and I'm just saying, let's be cautious. I don't mind putting down a a placeholder of the magnitude you say, but I think we need, we're gonna end up having to prioritize which projects first and over what period of time.
I I would agree. This is the placeholder, and I think it shows that we're committed as a placeholder.
So just one of the, how much money do we have left in that ARPA fund?
So that that'll be, there, we're expecting to move over probably about nine million dollars plus the three million, so approximately twelve.
Because I don't want to make a commitment to any one project of saying, we've spent all our ARPA money. But if we've got five, I agree, if we've got some investments we gotta bring up down there. So I'm okay with five.
So Thomas is okay with five, Tripp?
I am, but I I think if you spend that five, I think part of it's ARPA, but part of it's general, guys.
Uh, Councilman Hoffman, five as a placeholder?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
I'm just
I'm fine with that also. And Wardle?
Five. Yeah, just, just so you're aware, once the money ends up in the capital projects funds, ARPA kind of ceases to exist. It's all
The same thing.
It's all the same thing at that point. It's it's our money now.
Allison, I I spoke with you last week down in St. George about setting some money aside for grants. Is this, would this come out of that is, because there's a lot of money out there for projects like this um, from the federal government for all sorts of things to where I think we ought to have some line items set aside for matching grants. And that, maybe this could be part of that. I don't know.
Yeah, you can definitely say that you want to take some money from this line item or whatever for desert at peak and use it to find a grant or whatever, so absolutely.
So Ty, I I think you've got the right idea here, and that is, let's say that we've got a grant on the federal side to increase recreation for s, for youth sports, and we need to put in a field, and our matching portion's a ten percent portion or a forty percent portion. We could take it up. We could take
They're, they're all over the place as far as the matchings go, and if we're gonna hire a grant writer, I see this kind of be in that line item.
Yeah.
I think we also, and I talked to Tracy this morning about this, I think in the tourism, we ought to have a matching, a a grant, matching grant line as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, not five million, though, because we don't have five million in that budget. But I think there ought to be some in the tourism as well, because some of them are specifically designated towards tourism. There's a lot of them out there right now.
And some of that, that you're, the way that we would probably set something like that up there is you're going to have, like, you would designate some kind of a project or something like that that you would want to do. So desert at peak, I think we've got some capital projects in there. And I mean, we can set it aside for matching grants, but, um, maybe just designate what you're after.
Okay. So if we, but I guess what I'm getting at is if we have this five million in there, do we still need another line item in the capital projects for matching grant?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, I I agree with you on that. Okay.
Is, I know that trails have been brought up. Do we want to have a separate line, or should it just be included in with parks and recreation? This is, so we put in five. I just want to make sure.
There's several lines for trails within the budget that we're working on, several projects, several trails, projects.
Yeah, I I think, Andy, you know, after we talked last week, I don't know what kind of money we need to put in for paved trails. And and when we talk about paved trails, they're not cement trails. They're, they're trails that you see along Legacy Parkway or along, uh, Mountain View Corridor, or you see them going up Provo Canyon. They're just simply, uh, road, road trails tar that's put down and then painted so you have stuff on each side. I don't know. What do you recommend on that?
So counsel, would you be, would this be something that you're looking to save towards? Because like I said, we already have them identified as projects that the departments are working on. Or is this additional projects that you want the departments to do?
After talking with Andy, I thought the, this would be additional to what
This is up to you. So we, so we have, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Allison, I think we have two, uh, projects on trails. We have Sediment Canyon Trails, which I think is within Parks and Recreation, if I'm not mistaken. And then we have the Mountain Viking Trail that we're still working on as well. So I think those are the two that I know that are identified right now. I'm not sure of any others that
I, and I'm suggesting that
This is different than those, what you're saying.
I'm suggesting these are different.
There was one grant down there that we learned about that Ryan is gonna put in for, for Lake, the Lake Point Trail. That's a twenty-five thousand dollar non-matching grant that he's, he's gonna put in for immediately on that.
Very good.
After talking with Flint from the state or whatever, is that his name? Flint or, whoops. Flint, yeah, he, he said, yeah, apply for that and apply for one other thing, too.
Councilman Tripp.
Ryan's gonna be doing that.
You know, the Wasatch Front Regional Council administers what they call TAP money, which is active transportation stuff. Unfortunately, we're not fitting in the category to get that, and that is major money. And that's why you have really nice trails along Legacy that you're never tapping into unless you can get into the urban
Yeah.
Zone, which we're excluded from.
We currently have two hundred and fifty thousand for the Yates Springs Trail, ten thousand for trail improvements and rebuilds, and eighty thousand dollars for, to replace and restore signage, and that's just in the tourism fund alone. I think the problem that we run into is, is truthfully, the the manpower to complete additional projects on top of that. So I I think that's why I'm alluding to the fact of maybe saving for additional projects if we want to, but I don't know that we would have additional capacity without hiring additional employees.
And I'm suggesting we don't use employees. I'm suggesting we contract these beings out to
Even on top of that.
Yeah, but then you put a project, it's the whole thing we've talked about. You put project manager in, and then we manage the project if we can. But I think if we, my my concern is, we can save this year, but I think our public has made it very clear to us, they want amenities that make the community workable. The studies have shown that what Stansberry has in terms of trails is what we need throughout at least our our county trail system. And so I I don't know how we incorporate that, but I think we have to start somewhere.
So Chairman, if I can talk, please?
Please.
Um, so Cory's been working with the Trails Committee. They're, they're starting right now to identify what are our trails. And then what kind, what kind of trails are those? So we're, we're working through mapping that out right now, GPS mapping all the trails, making sure that we have a good plan. We're using the active transportation plan that we already have. Um, and then we'd like to bring that to you. So so saving, I'm just gonna echo Allison, saying saving will be good. We're trying to to create a better plan to bring to you so that we can because we, we all agree that what Scott's saying is right. Um, we're just not quite ready to start there yet.
So I put some money in and save for it.
Yeah, when is that, Tripp, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you? When is that gonna be completed?
They've actually just started working, working on it. So Kendall's working on some of the ATV trails with Jerry. Um, Cory's been working with some people on the Trails Committee on the, the more local walking path. Um, we just met today to close the RFP for the trail up Sediment Canyon. So there's just bits and pieces that are coming together, so I don't have a set date, but I, probably by April, we can have a good, close to a good plan.
So if we started saving for this year, and then you look at twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, that kind of stuff?
And, you know, maybe just to go along with that, then that gives, um, some good faith to the public, too, where they'll be able to see the the signage on the trails and things like that, too, and you'll be able to point to some of that. We've done this. This is our next step, too.
So is it, you want to add a line to include some in there to kind of hold as a savings account? Or do we want to wait and then put it in the next year and just kind of know that we have it? If you put it in there, then
I think we ought to have a saving line. The reason why is because a lot of these grants that we've learned about down here, we don't have to spend them until like twenty twenty-
we don't have to spend them until like twenty twenty-six and stuff, so we can apply for them now, come up with the plans and the ideas, and then spend them in two or three years from now. So.
So this is where, I agree, but this is where I disagree. I, we need to move on this by twenty twenty-four.
And I'm okay with that, but.
So saying twenty twenty-six.
I, I, my biggest concern is we need to go after the other money that's out there that's available right now, whether we actually have the plan in place or not. I say we get go after the money first if we can.
So would you like to add a line?
So would you like to add a line item to, for savings?
Yes.
How much would you like?
And frankly, you'll need a plan before you can get a grant.
Yeah, correct.
Correct.
Which is, yeah. The issue we had with trails is we, we have a trails map, but as we started looking at some of the trails that we had on there, we didn't own the trails, we're, there was a lot of questions, and so that's what we're trying to clean up right now, is who actually owns this to make sure we can make improvements on trails that are actually ours or the city's, and so that, that's something that we're trying to clean up right now, as Brittany mentioned. So we're trying to get that in place so then we can move forward and, and go after some of the grants.
Do you have a mount, uh, Councilman Thomas or Councilman Hoffman on putting in there or a recommendation from the manager's office?
I think it's important that we have the plan. We know we've got, we know what our needs are, we're gonna explore and we're gonna build from those. So I think to put a placeholder in there uh, is important. You know, I think that's important. And then we can always come back and do uh, a budget adjustment if, as we need to, but let's put enough money in there to do, get the job what we.
What's the amount?
And how much do you wanna do, kind of a deal? I don't know.
Let me give you an idea. So just today, just for engineered design for a two mile trail up Settlement Canyon, just for the engineered design, the top engineered design cost thirty-two thousand, the low was close to ten. Well, there was a really low one that didn't make sense.
So do you wanna put two hundred thousand dollars?
That's just design is what I.
Fifty thousand? Council, uh, Councilman Wardle, did you have a comment?
I'm trying to distinguish. We budgeted for the trail up Settlement Canyon already. Correct.
Right.
And, yeah, but I, I'm trying to, I, I would suggest we put five hundred thousand in. Let's make a freaking commitment.
Okay, let's put five hundred thousand, let's, I think that's a great starting point.
Councilman Thomas, you're good with that? Councilman Trip?
I think that's too much for this year. I would put in for design and maybe half the trail. I don't think I, I'm not as comfortable with half a million.
But I think the word, the word we used was a savings account is the contingency fund. I, I'm not sure what we titled this money. We're setting this aside.
Yep.
And so we, we don't, we're not gonna spend it all this year.
We're not gonna spend.
Maybe we'll spend it all next year.
Hardly any, because this is a savings line that we're putting it in. Councilman Hoffman? I'm sorry, did you have some other?
I'm okay to save. I'm just saying, if the design is ten to thirty-two, then you're gonna. Agreed. Um, design and engineering is usually ten percent, sometimes fifteen percent of what it is. So if you're planning on thirty-two for design for that trail, you'd expect a third of a million total.
Councilman Hoffman? The proposal is five hundred thousand dollars. I threw out two fifty, but thank you for doubling that.
No, I, I, I think we oughta commit to trails. I'm, if, if that's what we're gonna do and we can save it and roll it over.
I'm okay, cause that's in the savings line, we can always.
It's the savings line, right? Okay?
Good.
Hopefully we can build on it with some grants that we get.
Correct. That, that helps. If you have the money there, as you go after grants, you can say, yes, we have an identified funding sources.
I'm just concerned we call these savings accounts, you know, unrestricted funds that we can, I, I, I don't know what we call that title, Adam.
That, this is something that we track internally in our office. So this is when I came to you at the very beginning and I said, these are roads that we're saving for. Or for example, the Shambit water tanks where I told you, I've already set aside, aside the hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
So these are things that I've already taken care of within an internal spreadsheet that I handle. So, my office handles.
Okay.
So.
A second set of books, good.
I can make it one set of books.
Don't put that down, Tim.
The, the only other item I had here, just to bring up, just, this may be a convenience thing, so we're looking at a lot of improvements to this building next year. It's gonna be a year of, of construction, which HVAC and windows and doors and stucco and water lines and electrical lines. One thing I thought about, we put some money into, to do two of the bathrooms, I believe, this year. We thought about, why don't we just put in for all three and just try, let's get the misery out of the way and, and just, this year really have to upgrade the whole building. Is that something you'd like to do? It may be easier for us to, we may save some money.
You're gonna put all the bathrooms out of order?
One time.
Our thought was more that, what if we got a contractor to do the second floor and then they weren't the same one that got the bid on the next one, and now we can't get the same product, and so we've got.
We have to be honest, I think that's a very smart way.
Okay.
Well, I think it's, it's hidden in one of these lines. If you look at the next um, tab that Allison has, we just have to add another fifty thousand to that.
Yeah, it's the facility special project, so we currently have a hundred thousand dollars for the two bathrooms. Do you wanna add another fifty, or do you wanna add additional?
No, fifty should be fine, cause we already put a hundred, two bathrooms. Yeah. Any, any other issue, any other comments on the capital projects? This is, there's a lot of big projects.
No, I think that. I was just gonna say, I think you have a full plate.
We do.
This makes the total of our capital projects savings and everything, twenty-eight point seven million dollars, twenty-eight point seven seven million dollars in capital projects.
So how much are you putting into this building? I'm having a hard time seeing the line.
So it, it's approximately two point nine three five million, so you've got two million in HVAC, four hundred thousand in uh, windows, a hundred and eighty-five in stucco, a hundred thousand in waterline, a hundred thousand in electrical, and a hundred and fifty in bathrooms.
What about landscaping? Is he gonna, look at that, is that part of that work?
That's in a separate, that's in the, that's in, Parks and Recreation has that in their budget.
What about asphalt? Did you mention asphalt? Any parking, we're gonna do any work on parking?
We did our parking last year, except for what the state did out here, which I would never recommend them doing it like that.
Please, Andy, is we, we go to look at these projects, I mean, you, you've added up a ton. Are we looking at bidding these as one project and bringing in one construction firm who can do multiple things?
Some of them we can bundle.
I mean, I'm, I'm just looking at what school districts do and others that if we were to, to contract and, and try and bid them that way, then you have a project team, you have the ability to go through. I, I know, at least in my experience, when we've done that, instead of piecemealing them, it tends to, you, you get a better price in bulk.
You, yeah, so you'd look at, I'm just gonna name names like Jacobs or Big D and things that cover all that.
No, that'd be fine. We'll see what we can pull together.
Hey, question, question, follow on Scott's discussion?
Council, uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
So Andy, as we talk about the remodel going here, are we going to have a project manager?
That's what I think we're just talking about. If we can bundle these things together, we could probably hire somebody to do a lot of this for us and have a project manager manage a lot of this. We may do, we may do one offs on some of these. The doors we're already planning on doing, we're a little bit further along on the doors. HVAC may be different than the others, but some of these others, I think we could bundle together and get, and get somebody in charge of it. Cause that's, that's, there's a lot of work for this next year for our facilities folks to do, and this may be more than they can do.
I, I agree. If we're gonna have a magnitude, a project of this magnitude, we've got to have a project manager.
Nope. I don't think there's even a question on that. I, thank you, Councilman Thomas. Okay, anything else, Andy?
Anything else on this one? I have just a couple more in that suit.
I don't think it's in there.
I'll check on that. Um, just a couple other quick things. Um, this is in solid waste. Wayne and I got together and, and we, we bumped the, the, some of the revenues up just a little bit based on his projections, and then we um, he had an ex- he had a position in that we approved last year, or this year. He, it was an admin position. We talked about that, and he really needs some coverage on the weekends, and so he agreed to re- to remove that person from his budget, and so we have removed that. He has the coverage he needs through some temporary services he could cover. Um, and there were, I think there was one or two other little changes I think he made on. So we, let's see. On the regional landfill, Allison, that's one that he went up on. He, he talked to Katie, and that's one that we were low on, just on the, the billing cycle on line eighteen for the MSW regional landfill fees. I don't know, we just budgeted down compared to the year before. So that's one that he recommended changing. And the only other two things, and we've already kind of touched on one of these, and so uh, we are getting the three point two million dollars. We received one point six million dollars this year of the extra ARPA. Um, and so we'll get another one point six. Now Allison, I think she, she went to UAC and they're talking about maybe places you may wanna put this money, a way to handle this, rather than just dumping it in the general fund or capital projects, maybe something that's kind of in between. I don't know if you wanna explain that, so that may be the place where we wanna think about that.
There's some other special type of fund that you can put it in that's a diff- an additional savings account, so to speak, that doesn't impact your fund balance, but doesn't, also doesn't trap it in your capital projects fund. I'm not saying that that's necessarily the best spot.
Who suggests that?
Yeah, the auditors.
Auditor.
Yeah, and so I've gotta do a little bit more research. I'm not saying that that's necessarily what we need to do, but it does, it doesn't impact our fund balance. It also doesn't trap it in the capital projects fund.
Gives you more flexibility.
So.
Okay, Chair recognizes Councilman Hoffman.
There was a discussion about some of the money down there at the USAC meeting on Tuesday night about a way to use one percent of that that they're asking the counties to think about. And that is, so and for us, it'd be roughly around thirty-two, between thirty-two and thirty-three thousand dollars if, if it's one percent. But to go to a unified collection of the counties to where they get together, where, where there's one central area that's funding um, the, I, I'm not sure of the best way to say it, but the, the campaign to help um, the cu- counties fight for PILT and the SRS, is it the SRS money as well? And so there's, there, they say if they get one percent of all of that money, the additional money that the counties are getting, that will be enough money to run that indefinitely, and they don't know where they're gonna put it. But they also, the counties, we, we were all saying, well, look, we've gotta take this back to the rest of our councils and commissioners and talk about this. But then if there's ten counties in the state that don't do it, the other nineteen counties do, we should have a lot more say in what happens with the PILT money and get more of it and things like that. So they are asking that, they did put that out there to where we use one percent of that money for something along those lines, to where there is a focused one area for all the counties to fight for PILT and SRS money at the federal level, here in the, the western states.
I know that the SRS funding is only, I think it's reevaluated every uh, six years. So, uh, but that would definitely be a, a council decision as far as what you'd like to do with that funding.
So, yeah, so USAC is asking, putting that out there for us.
To think about it.
To think about it.
Yeah, that's probably another, that's a discussion.
This is the UAC board, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, we'll, we'll on Tuesday night, yes.
Yeah, because it didn't come up in our USAC meetings at all.
No.
And, and I, I don't mind doing it once we have a plan, we can review it. But I've gotta be honest, I don't wanna give money to UAC when we don't see a plan yet. So I think it's one of those that we can pull out of.
Out later if we want to?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just, I, I wanted to bring it up tonight so we could think about it and talk about it, cause it, it would be a good thing going forward if we, if we put up thirty-two thousand, but we continue to get millions and, or more millions from over ti- the timeframe from the federal government.
Council, uh, Chair recognizes Councilman.
The one time I went on the, the Naco PILT uh, bombing raid, or whatever you wanna call it, where we put up there and lobbied them hard. I was sitting in Senator Cory Booker's office from New Jersey. And here's how he explained it to me, guys, that you guys are fighting to get PILT as an ongoing thing. And that sounds like a reasonable thing to do, cause we do it every year. He said, there are people here politically that say we're never doing it on an ongoing basis, because then we can go back to our district and say, you got PILT this year because of my work. So he said, it's always gonna be like this, it's always gonna be a fight. The formula for how much you get into your state is set on a federal level that will not be impacted by any kind of lobbying. It'll be all or none. And so anyway, I, I'm not opposed to, to having some sort of ongoing lobby to keep PILT going, but it says right now, the proponents also are not in favor of doing ongoing, because it's a, it's a political palm bow they can wave when they want to.
Yeah.
So this is a Democrat from New Jersey who gets none, explained it to me that way.
Council, as a complete side note, the fund that I'm discussing too is not just for this money. This would be, this would be a fund that we could use for any type of money that we get, or any overage that we have in our fund balance that we could potentially move funds over into instead of putting them into the capital projects fund. So I needed to clar- I wanted to clarify that.
So it could even be used for fires?
Yeah, you betcha.
Okay, uh, Chair.
I'm in favor of it, I'm in favor of it.
Chair recognizes Councilman Wardle.
Wow, how'd you like that one?
Allison, I think it's a fantastic idea, but since we're not doing it tonight, can you just bring it to? Bring it to us and let us do it, and let's move along.
It would not be something that we would be prepared for at all. I just wanted to make sure, let you know that that was a.
I think it's a great idea. I think we get it set up and then we may, we move the necessary money in a budget adjustment.
My, my guess is right now.
General fund, is that right?
Yeah, my guess is right now is that even next year when that money arrives is we'd probably just put it in the general fund to start, and then make a decision later on. That's probably gonna be the best option for us.
Yeah. Okay, we just wanted to bring it up just because it's coming in.
No, I appreciate it.
We need to budget for it, make sure we have.
And we wanna think about it to see what's the best action to be taken.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, the, the last item is the property next door is the other thing that we haven't budgeted one way or the other yet, whether we sell that or develop it or, or keep it or whatever that is. And so I just wanna make sure you're aware of that. That's something that we need to, to decide on, and that decision impacts what we were talking about before about the front, doing the landscaping. We were kind of waiting on that decision before we decide on what we do out front, so we haven't put it in the budget. We, I think we just learned. And so we still need to put that in.
And I think that's something we're gonna discuss on the twenty-ninth, I think.
Are we doing it in closed session, or are we doing it in open? Cause I'm, I can have the discussion. I'm good to go tonight.
I think we'll do it on the twenty-ninth. Are you okay with?
I got that.
Okay.
So, that's one, one thing that's still kind of outstanding, and that just ties something together.
Council, and that money regard, if we were to sell it or whatever, that money would go to, into a self-fixed assets account and then be reallocated to what, wherever the council decides it would go to. So wouldn't necessarily, I, we could potentially budget it upfront, but initially, that's where the funds would go to start.
Pickleball courts.
Hot air balloons.
Great, true.
So, so for right now, just so you know, so we budgeted for the, the facility just as we would normally do. Here's how much expenditures revenues, then when we sell it, we'll have to. Where the money goes.
Any money there?
I put it, I put it in my.
I did put any.
That's what I noticed. I just said, let's just leave it until we, until we know. So I just, I just left the. So I think we have the revenues there, because we knew we'd keep collecting the revenues until we sold it at least, and I just put expenditures into some minimal expenditures to keep the building up.
Are we good?
That is all we have. Going forward, you just need to help us know if you, do we need to meet next week on the budget, or we just, you would just want us to kind of finalize some of these numbers?
So I think there's a couple of questions on the budget one you just brought up with the Main Street, I'm just gonna call it Main Street property. I think we oughta have that discussion. Um, with some new information that's come to light, uh, on what action to be taking, look forward to. And I, and I think that's it, and then.
Council, so um, I, I mentioned in, in an email that the process would be that we do need to have a budget ready to present or publish for the public for seven days. Um, so would, would it be that I, or if we were to do this to have it ready to go on the, up for approval on the sixth, um, we would potentially give you the budget that night and get your okay, and then um.
So I think what uh, Allison's asking in a nice way is, do you foresee any changes to what we've just discussed?
Yes, that's what, exact, thank you.
And if not, then she will be prepared and, and to present this exact same budget for approval on the twenty-ninth.
Yes, and unfortunately, I will not be here on the twenty-ninth, but I will make sure that you have a copy.
Hold on.
I know. Andy, of the alley and Allison and Andy show, Andy's better anyway, so.
You know what happens when you leave.
Long as you're going somewhere warm.
Hopefully. Um, but I will make sure that you have a copy that, that would be as presented.
Ca- uh, did you have a comment, Councilman Trip?
Yeah, I, I think that uh, we made an early comment about doing benefits for council members. I think we put something in there as a placeholder. I think I wanna review that and make sure that I'm okay with that before I say that it's okay.
Well, I think we'll vote on that on the twenty-ninth, and, and I think we have the majority to say, put it in there as a placeholder.
Mr. Chairman, I think the only numbers I'm concerned about is insurance coming back to us.
Okay.
That, and, and not, I'm not concerned in the sense of, holy crap. I'm concerned in the sense we just make sure we got it right.
Okay.
I think the other thing is, if you can get this. I think the other thing is, if you can get this and the Utes can win Saturday and make it to the Pac-12 championship, I will promise no adjustment.
Got it. I'll call Kyle.
Councilman Thomas, do you have any questions on the budget presented? Councilman Trip?
How's that?
No, Councilman Hoffman?
No, can't think of anything.
I, I don't foresee, I brought up the concerns earlier.
I'm good.
Okay, Council, I might, I'll anticipate having this to you sometime over the weekend, it, so that you can start reviewing it. Like I said, I will not be here on that Tuesday. I probably won't even, I won't be able to call in either, but, um, Andy will be here, so.
So, you're saying that we, we can't make major changes next Tuesday because we'll have noticed.
Wait a second, Carrie will be here. Carrie can do everything.
She's much, she is much better than I am anyway. We all know that.
Is there anything else in the budget that you see that we need to look at or talk about or anything?
I do not foresee anything that there, I, I don't, I think we've discussed all the major points and.
We're fine tuning the numbers now.
Yeah, this, these are minor adjustments. These, these are clerical errors, things like that. So, these are not anything.
So, you're, you're aware, so once she sends it out, that's kind of the one we're going with, or else we'll have to renotice after that.
Yeah, I, I, I don't see a problem with it, to be honest.
Okay, that's good. So, we'll shoot for December the sixth then.
Okay.
All right.
Wonderful.
Very good.
Council, I entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.